So I can say like.
I always told you infected in that. I didn't do anything.
Thanks.
So you're supposed to figure out what to do from the.
You have to be able to.
Well, I don't think you had a go to there.
Yeah.
It's an open.
We have a.
Good church.
Where I was like, it's a little weird.
Now you.
It's a situation like she's been emailing me. I call one.
Honestly, they do need.
I really need somebody.
So I sent you that.
Can I ask?
They do need a phone call.
Yeah.
I haven't knew I can't figure out how to.
Yeah, we were up at my park and you were there.
Oh, really?
No, I was going to be. But she called me three times.
He's been pat on the stern. He's like, yeah. He knew it.
All right, are we ready?
Uh, Dave, we're ready when you're ready, so.
Do we have any lights now?
No, there's no lights, so we just got to figure it out. Okay.
He can talk to you, though.
He can say we're ready.
No, he can't, though. He said they're working on it, but don't have it yet.
All right, we must be ready.
All right, we're ready, all right.
We're on.
I'll count backwards, I don't know, I reckon anyway.
Have a flag?
So, do we have a flag?
We're.
Yeah.
Long Meadow.
All right, so, good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 26th, School Committee Meeting. This meeting is live and being recorded from our brand-new school committee room. We'll begin tonight with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, of the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Is there any correspondence?
Oh, uh, no.
No correspondence. Uh, moving on to visitor comments, I don't see any visitors, so we'll move on to school committee comments. Anybody have a school committee comment? All right, I guess. I just want to take a moment to welcome Kelly Gangee, our brand-new Assistant Superintendent for Learning. It's her first meeting with us, actually, in a school committee setting, so I just wanted to take a moment to introduce you to the community, and, you know, if you have anything you want to say, feel more than welcome to.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here, soon celebrating my two-month anniversary with the Long Meadow Public Schools, so it's been a great summer so far. Coming from the Wachusett Regional School District, where I spent seven years as Director of Curriculum, and so feel very much at home with the Long Meadow initiatives around learning, RTI, balanced literacy, and the other wonderful things that we're working towards, so glad to be here.
We're definitely glad to have you.
Thank you.
So, other than that, anybody else have any other comments? Okay, move right along into the Superintendent's Report.
Go fast.
Yeah, try to keep things moving.
They, thank you. To start with, the move to the new building has been wonderful. We're enjoying our new location immensely. We also want to take a few minutes to thank Diane and Tom. There's an awful lot happening behind the scenes here that people visually won't see when you visit us. We have some furniture that shouldn't be here, other furniture that didn't arrive, what office it went to, it's been an awful lot of work, so I want to thank Tom and Diane for their extra efforts. It looks, it looks like it was an easy move, it wasn't in many ways, so thanks for the great work. Technology discussions are underway, we have a committee meeting set up for September 19th in the new administrative conference room, which is also the school committee room, we're using both names, I'll switch to school committee room. The tech advisory board meeting, Diane did call to ask if we could set up a meeting with the town advisory board meeting, since the chair is the one who calls the meeting, she's left messages twice and we have not heard, so we'll continue to follow through, but we do not have a meeting set up.
I can reach out to him, Diane.
Okay, and he did, and I want to correct that, he did respond, and I don't know when, because of the moon, move and all that, but he said that he would arrange a meeting sometime in September. Okay, terrific.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
It, it would be good to have it in September, because we are looking to talk, talk about one-to-one at the high school, so I'd like to get the, the school department's technology committee aligned with the town advisory committee, so that would be great if we could meet in September. The school building committee met last week to review our progress. We are asking for a punch list, and I thank Jim, who's really on top of this, and John for his support, because we really need to get that punch list. The report that I've been given is that we have a year to fulfill that, that, and we withhold money, but Tony leaves November 1st, and I'd really like to see a lot of this work done before Tony leaves the site, because that's where I think we'll have the most, most ability to complete task while he is still here.
And we haven't.
Could you explain punch list for the audience?
Sure. The punch list is a list of items that have not been completed. The architect goes around, makes a visual list of what he thinks needs to be done, and then goes back to Gilbein, to Gilbein, who finishes up some of the items on the list, then the architect gets it again, and they keep whittling it down. The last time I saw it, which about two, which was about two months ago, it was probably three inches thick, that's how many items were on the list, three inches of a document, so they told me that it's still a good, there was still a good number of, amount of items on the list. Jim?
Just for clarification, so that people don't think we have three pages, three inches of stuff that be, yet to be done, it was, we, you and I and John, I don't think are clear about what's actually left, because it wasn't clear in the meeting what was left. There was three pages worth, or three inches of stuff that has been done, with some yet to be done, and the to be done, they've committed now to come back on September 9th, in the September 9th meeting, and tell us all what that is. But, to your point, Maria, it's not very clear what's left, but I don't think there's, at least I hope, there is not three inches worth of stuff.
Tom Murphy told me it was still a substantial list, and I said, is it going to be as thick as the last document? And he said, close.
That would be unfortunate, at best.
Very unfortunate, which is why I feel the need to really be persevering to get this list.
Katie.
When does our one-year time clock begin for this deadline? Has it already begun? You said we have one year to complete the.
I believe there's one deadline in February.
I thought it was in October.
But we don't, it, it, it doesn't end, because we don't pay them until we're satisfied with the work that's been done. The issue is that when Tony leaves, Gilbein is not on site, so then you get into a, shall I say, a battle over how much money we really owe them, and how much work we're willing to let go, so it's really just better to get this list now and try and get all the repairs done.
Because he said she's.
Exactly, exactly.
So they will be here at the next meeting, Bobby Barquette, Peter Greenberg, Tom Murphy and Rob Alger will be at the next meeting with this information for us, because, you know, I think at this point, it's, this, I mean, this is our building. School Building Committee is still, you know, running the show a little bit, but we've assumed responsibility over Building C, we're now officially moved into Building B, or Building A, and Building B is about to open, so, you know, we, we certainly have a responsibility at this point to ensure that we get everything we need accomplished prior to them leaving, because at the end of the day, we're going to be the ones stuck with whatever's not done, and that's not a, a good situation, as far as I'm concerned, so.
And I've mentioned this to Jim, in keeping tabs with my other superintendent friends, they say that the one failing of most of the committees is to have that punch list done, that you live with a lot of things that cost you money over the long run, because you didn't keep tabs on the punch list. And Jim was very good about asking about it and pushing for it, and they told us they're going to tighten it up and then give us what is actually the list from both parties, so we'll see.
Yeah, I will say, just, I know you're on the subject, I was going to talk about it as well, so I'll do it here, I guess, it's, it is, in my view, disappointing that it's not readily available. I mean, it's something that you use, any project manager, you use to manage a project, and it should be, at any time, easily push a button and here it is, and it doesn't seem that easy, so it gives you the impression that it's not well managed, and that could be wrong, that could be wrong, but it just gives you that impression. So hopefully, on the 9th, when they come here, it will be very clear about what's left, and it won't be a difficult thing to work our way through. Because I don't think we'll have a, we won't have another SBC meeting before the 9th, so.
No.
So it will really be up to, you know, them to bring information.
So.
Can I ask a silly question?
Please.
If they don't have it readily available, how do they know themselves what actually needs to be done?
Well, that's my, that's my point. It's, it's, it is, we'll have to wait till I get here, but it's expressed that it's, it's managed by three different people, three different lists for three different buildings, and in.
Potentially different formats. I say potentially, because I'm not sure about this, but certainly not in a format that somebody wants to just spit out and say, here it is, so.
So I just don't understand how they're even going to be able to answer our questions if it's.
Well, that's, that's why I actually gave them to the 9th. They were going to be here to, excuse me, today, but they thought it would be difficult to get ready for today, so we gave them till.
I think, I think a part of it is also making sure that they are able to answer the questions that we would have, because this is, you know, for all intents and purpose, the, really the first time, I know they're meeting with the Select Board next week, but really the first time that they're going to have to answer questions from people who are not School Building Committee members. So I think that they're a little cautious about what information they're putting in front of us, and probably rightfully so, but, you know.
We'll see.
Tough.
It's just, it, you know, it does give you the wrong impression, but we'll have to wait and see what happens.
Yeah, so.
Okay. New staff orientation, we hired 27 new staff members that actually came to orientation the other day. Kelly did a great job of running a meeting where they are aligned with their mentors, that they're taught about the Long Meadow culture, as well as able to ask questions and learn about what, what, what we do here. I think that what we looked for in our staff that have the capability to excel in the classroom, we look for team players, able to communicate well, intelligence and knowledge of curriculum, and I think if we have the people that are willing to work with others, we know that they're going to be doing a great job in Long Meadow. Opening day today was highly successful. Marsha Har and I gave speeches, as well as Michael Clark, and Michael Clark did an outstanding job in representing the school committee.
Thank you.
He was very well received, as he told people that he would be supportive, as the whole board would be, as we move forward in this fiscal year, which may be a challenge. The faculty meetings directed by the principals were held at each of the six schools, and word from all the principals, word was that, that everyone had great meetings and opening days. I will say that the spirit at the convocation was very high, and people were very positive. The educator evaluation tool, Kelly is also spearheading efforts to reshape the evaluation tool into a more user-friendly document. We met with the LEA and the administration today to review a draft proposal, the meeting went very well, we have a few more meetings to discuss this, to see if we can pilot an easier document, so that it's definitely one that people can use, and that it's easier for the evaluator in giving information, but it's also easier for the teachers in terms of having to document a lot of information, if it's observed in the classroom, they won't need to do that. In addition to this list, building tours, Tom Mazza, Mike Rabel, and I went on building tours to look at all of the different buildings, they're in excellent shape, the custodians have done a Herculean effort in terms of getting them ready, floors are shining, bathrooms are clean, classrooms are ready, so thank you to, to Mike, Adrian, and Tom for making sure that the buildings were ready. RTI, the elementary principals, Kelly and I have been developing staff development plans for the RTI response to intervention for this coming year. The middle school principals will also focus on it this year. Kelly also did a huge presentation for the staff today, the elementary staff, it was very well received by them. They not only had a presentation where Kelly broke it down, what RTI was, what it looks like in terms of assessment and interventions, but they then broke down into groups where she had eight facilitators meeting with eight different groups, and in that they were asked what they, what they needed in terms to make this work, what, what obstacles they saw, so she's bringing that information back to the administrative team. Japan, I, I wrote quite a bit about Japan here, and what I think I'm going to do right now is just go through some slides for you and talk a little bit about the trip. It was, it was definitely prodigious, prodigious to go and see this magnificent culture, in terms of people, but I think the one thing that, that caught my interest the most, the students are like American students, they're fun, they're joyful, they're fun-loving, people had a great sense of humor there, and I think that, okay, we're doing lights, so I think that it was absolutely magnificent. I got to meet with the Minister of Education and the Minister of Foreign Affairs to talk about education through the first part of the trip. The first, one of the first stops was the devastated area from the tsunami. This was absolutely heartbreaking, heart-wrenching to see what had happened. Three hundred miles wide, the tsunami hit the shore, and two and a half miles inland. The only thing that was left standing was a school, because it was up to code. The principal heard that the tsunami was coming through sirens, he brought 500 students up to the rooftop, and they were there for 36 hours. While on the rooftop, they saw bodies going by, houses, cars, trucks, being washed beyond them, and the students kept asking about their families. The principal had to lie to them and say that he was sure their family was up at the high ground. After 36 hours, they had only lost one child, and the rest, he managed to keep alive. But you can see from the beach, the devastation, the foundations of houses where people went back and put flowers, and things like the glove, you find little, little glimpses of life in, in the dirt around you.
Is some of that area radioactive now?
We were not that far north, we, I think up north it is, but not where we were.
The reactors, yeah.
Yeah.
They're still struggling with that.
They definitely are still struggling. Again, the foundations, you can see, that was actually floor tile in a home. Over to the bottom left, those, those are pieces of what I found inside one of the foundations. The red writing is, it's a soup, is soup spoon, the handle to it, and that, that says teacher on it, which was, I thought, very, very touching, giving, we were educators that were over there. A piece of a teacup, a piece of a floor tile, a piece of pot the flowers had been in, a piece of wallboard, and a piece of sea glass. So it made you wonder, who lived in the house, had they escaped, were they at home, was the teacher in the school, one of them that was survived, what happened to his or her family. There were also many, many elderly that were still there, this man is showing his wife something off in the distance, people were returning to bring flowers, okay. This gentleman, he was an older gentleman that came on his bike, and he just sat there, we were there for about 45 minutes, and he never moved, he just sat on his bike looking. So it was things like that that were just absolutely devastating to see. We went up into the mountains, these are the children that were relocated from the tsunami area, you can see the metal houses, they're, they're, the temporary housing, even though the kids have been in them for two years with their families. The joy of the children was contagious, and we thought, this is absolutely amazing that they've been through such a horrendous experience, but they're still able to, to regather and to share happy moments with us. The students make their lunches every day, the food comes in, they heat it up, and then they serve one another, it, it really is something to see, they cooked for us, they gave us our food, okay. And everyone loved the fact that they cleaned their classrooms, they actually scrubbed the floors when they're done, they washed the dishes, so we were, the, the American educators, which were from 15 different countries, 15 different states, we all said that will never go over in the United States, but they're cute as can be. The, the, this is one of the high schools we visited when I was visiting our partners up in Takikawa, they asked me if I wanted, would I wear a kimono, I said that was fine, and then we had a tea ceremony, so this is a tea ceremony club, where the students actually practice the old traditions and pass them on to the next set of students that come in, okay. Art is highly valued, too, you have art classes, this is Takikawa West High School, where the students were engaged in create, in a lot of creative activities. They had competitions where they chose a song, and it was student-directed, they wrote a musical and performed it for their peers, they had flower arranging, t-shirt competitions, and more, and at the end, one of the homerooms won, it was really quite, quite amazing to see. I mentioned it to the staff today, that I'd like to see more of that type of activity in, when the MCAS is said and done, is there any way that we could actually free time up for students to actually be creative, and to think about the creativity, the communication, the collaboration, all the four Cs that we're talking about that promote higher-level thinking, so that was neat to see. That's Takikawa High School to the left, where a lot of those creative lessons were going on. The couple to the right, I was with the American delegation, and as I'm walking past this, this bar, I'm looking at them from the outside, and they're looking at me, so I stopped to take the picture, and they just cheered me in, gave me a cheer, and I had a good shot of them, so. The top picture is the American delegation, we were in trying all kinds of different food. Steve, the Asian man, was of Korean and Japanese descent, so he knew what food to order, so that we experimented, but it wasn't too outrageous. Down the bottom, it is the picture of me in the glider, I actually did go in the glider, it was phenomenal to be flying up in the air with no sounds, other than the pilot talking to me on occasion. We visited Tokyo, but we also had the pleasure of going to the US Embassy, we met with the, the ambassador. The pictures to the right are actually pictures at, at the minister, the ministry, where we met with the Minister of Foreign Affairs and the Minister of Education. There's new alignment going on in the curriculum that's similar to the Common Core, we found that very interesting to see. The US Ambassador is working a lot on the reaction to the, or supporting tsunami efforts to try and bring back housing and schools to that area, but it, it was fun meeting with all these different people to see what was happening in education. It is amazing that China and, and Japan are going more toward creative, but still pushing the Common Core in the same way that we are. People often ask, how was the food, so I took a picture of the pork guts stew, I did not eat it, I just thought it would be something for people to see what was on a menu of one of the places that we went, okay. That's the American delegation up top, where we met at the Japan Foundation, and down the bottom is a picture of students, it, it was amazing, because most of the time, students were not in rows, they were sitting like this, they sat in pairs, but they were working together in every single classroom that we went in, and that was interesting to see. There were a lot of hands-on activities, every science class had hands-on activities going on, and that, it would have been like walking into our high school to see that. The young men over to the left, also in Takikawa, they were giving opinions, some of the opinions were centered around things like, they have clubs after school, but if they play soccer, they play soccer for the year, if they, if they do fencing, they do fencing for the year, and their opinions were that they should be able to take more clubs. Also, one of the young men wanted to know why he was studying, and did he really need it for college, or were they just courses that they were having him take? So they had some pretty strong opinions, but their English was great, they presented for us in English, I was very impressed with the level of their ability to speak our language. And whatever it was, everybody wanted to do the victory sign, so that was something that we all participated in. Again, here's some of the science labs down, down to the right. This sport over to the left, it's like Kindle or something like that, but they have swords, they whack each other with sticks, and they scream as they go at each other, it's an ancient sport, I did try it, and I felt like I got a lot of tension out by doing it, but it's not something I think I'd want to do every day after school, so, okay. Those are some of the rice fields, and the man and woman are looking at a temple in the mountains, okay. That temple is made out of gold, this is down in Kyoto, and then the picture to the top left, people at noon go to pray at the temples every, every single day, and then pictures to the top right and bottom right, it's the fish market, it's one of the largest fish markets in the world, it was fascinating to go and see the fish and how it operated. The area was helping some of the fish market people, so. That was an, that was actually an American group that was visiting in the fish market, That was the Minister of Foreign Affairs, where we're exchanging cards, the welcome to Takikawa, okay. It's a little hard to see, but the reception, the chairs were on the floor, it, it was like sitting in a chair with no legs, so that was the reception that I went to the first night, it was quite luxurious, with quite a wide array of food, and those are former superintendents in the Takikawa district. To the left is, is a group that was performing in a music festival, and to the right, the preschoolers, it was a hot day, so they just had them go on their skivvies, they had a pool full of fish, and they took their fish, and then when they actually caught it, they went over to a poster, and they were able to identify what fish it was by looking at the poster, it was really a cute activity. And then they were doing their engineering work with their digging and getting water to run down tunnels and all kinds of things, so it was, it was really fun to see the preschoolers. The preschoolers made me some pictures to bring back to the United States, and that's some of my fans right there. And then down the bottom, the, the three of the hosts that took me around, Yaz, Akai, and the Minister of Education, who was very, very, very kind to me while I was there. Down in the bottom right, they take their shoes off, and those are the, actually, the places where you put your shoes every day. The Superintendent of Schools is with, with the calligraphy, okay. I'm learning how to do calligraphy, all right. The Takikawa Wind Band, so you can see that music's very important, as well as the tradition. This, again, the science labs were, were really hands-on, and they had really great equipment in there. This is one of the few classrooms that had rows, it was a math class, but the students were up at the board, and they were doing problems on the board, very similar to an American math class. The backpacks were similar everywhere you went, again, small group work, it looked like if you went into, went into one of our first-grade classes. The art was phenomenal, the stained glass window was made out of paper, cut up in small, small amounts, and there were maybe 50 of them hanging, that was part of the competition, each class had to make a stained glass window, and they were substantial size. The flower competition, the young lady with her flower, and then just students around the school, okay. Here's the glider ride, I'd recommend it highly, okay. That's a saki factory up, up above, it shows the process of making saki, and then just some of the countryside down below. It's a beautiful, beautiful country, Takikawa really is, in particular, gorgeous area. And that concludes my visit to Japan. Are there any questions?
Yeah, how do you control the slides?
Kelly is.
Yeah.
Who's that man?
Hi, Tech.
I blink and they flip. I blink and they flip.
Okay.
Marie, how many students were in each class?
It wasn't bad. There were only about 25. There were, it was unbelievably similar to our country.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, very small sizes down in the elementary grades, maybe 22.
And was it, um, it was all public, but the girls were wearing uniforms? Some, it seemed like the girls wore uniforms and the boys had, didn't.
The boys had uniforms, two usually white shirts, blue pants, but they might have a sweater or something on. Um, it was different schools. The shots were from, too. Most had uniforms, some did not. So that's probably what you're picking up, some of them that didn't. Uh, it, the public schools mostly had uniforms. I'm trying to think. There, there was actually one Catholic school we visited where they did not wear uniforms and they had the best technology going. It was reversed. There was certainly a lot of money that, uh, somehow had been donated to that school.
That's great.
So...
How long was their school day?
Much longer. Their school day started at about 8:30, 9 o'clock, and they were there till about 5 o'clock.
And then they did activities?
No, the activities, the school day stopped at about 3:30 and they did activities till about 5.
So, and they picked that one club for the year?
One club for the year.
Even, is that in elementary school as well or just in high school?
They didn't have clubs in elementary school. They tended to get out at 3:30 and then went home.
Was there any discussion of World War II and, um, post-World War II? Did you get into any of the curriculum with, say, like, history? Cause there's some, a real struggle inside Japan today about telling the truth about World War II.
Yeah, it was, it was a topic we all avoided because it was probably just too painful to do that. I think they talk now about American relationships being very positive and strong. So to bring up World War II, none of us wanted to do that.
I was just wondering how, though, did they cover it in their, in the history, in their history classes at the high school?
They didn't say, but one thing that was evident when you went to Tokyo and, and, um, in some of the major cities, there was nothing left. Tokyo is a completely modern city because everything's wiped out. Kyoto is one of the only places, um, in the Tokyo area that, and that was still a drive, that had anything left because it wasn't bombed by the Americans. That's where the, um, Gisha District is still intact, the old houses, as well as, um, as, as well as the temples.
Any other questions for me? And you're gonna do a much more in-depth presentation? Is that true? Or is this?
This is it.
Okay. Just making sure. We have a lot of conversations.
We did. And I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to get it together because of opening day, but I was able to. So...
Okay.
But I'm happy to do another for you if you'd like offline.
This is the second time today I've seen this. I feel good about it.
I thought you would.
Marie, did you also just wanna mention very quickly why some of us have these nice nifty black?
Oh, yes.
Bracelets?
Kelly and some of her curriculum coordinators were talking about the idea of win, what I need. So what I need is about what staff need in terms of getting their job done, what students need in terms of learning, what school committee needs in terms of helping to support us, and parents in terms of what they need to help their children be successful. So every staff member was given a bracelet that says win and on the other side, what I need. So we're going to try and really work to win, to have all students learn at high expectations. And, um, and the bracelets are significant to help us remember that.
Appropriately named win, which is a good theme for the year.
Win.
I would just say. So... All right. Any other questions for Marie? Okay. We'll move right along into Chair Report. Uh, I've had a busy couple days, to be honest with you. Um, so the first thing I wanna do is, John had pointed out over maybe a couple days ago that the 23rd of December, we have a meeting scheduled. Being two days before a major holiday, uh, it may be difficult, uh, for some people to make it. I know that we did hear some from school committee about that. So, uh, I'd like to reschedule that meeting if at all possible. And that we probably have warrants, right, that we need to do?
That would be accurate. We would have warrants, but we can do them during the day.
Okay. So we do warrants during the day. Um, do we wanna, why don't we schedule, I mean, I don't know what sort of business we're gonna have, obviously, at that point in time. Do we wanna schedule a full school committee meeting for the 16th? And then we can schedule a short warrant meeting for the 23rd in the morning? A nice 10-minute one? That, do we feel good about that?
I can't make the 16th.
Why don't we just do the full-up one plan plus a short one for the warrants unless something drives in some other way?
Just do the warrants and then?
Oh, isn't there a meeting planned already that?
Well, we have one for the 23rd that we're gonna reschedule.
Yeah, but I mean, the second Monday would be?
The 9th.
The 9th, right? Which we're meeting, the 9th.
So, so we're meeting?
Yeah.
Right? So you have that meeting and then unless we have a need for another full-up one, we just do the warrants on?
That's fine. I mean?
23rd in the morning or something.
How about the 26th?
Yeah.
The 26th?
Quick warrant. Is that feasible?
Well, I think we're just gonna look to do like a 10 a.m. on the 23rd for 10 minutes.
I'm not gonna be here.
Okay. I mean, yeah.
But that way it'd be just a warrant meeting.
All right. Yeah, and I was, I was just proposing having a full one and we can cancel it if there's no business that we need to do. Just in, just so we have it down and everybody knows to be.
It almost never gets canceled.
I'm just letting you know.
It'll get created if it's needed, but it won't get canceled if it's not.
All right. No, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. If you wanna, if we wanna do that, um, that's fine.
What is it you wanna do?
We're gonna just, we're just gonna schedule a warrant meeting for that week, the vacation weekend.
That week?
All right. So you'd have the full-up one for the second week of the month, or second Monday of the month, whatever, right?
Right.
And then we'd have the next meeting that month would be the short warrant meeting.
And if there's a need for a larger school committee discussion, we could either have it that morning at the 10th about, or I mean, the 23rd about some issues or just do a warrant meeting and not have a busy agenda. So, do we wanna say 10 a.m. on the 23rd?
Sounds fine.
Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah, I vote no.
Okay. Well, you won't be here.
I prefer the 26th, although I'm, I'm not gonna be here.
Is the 26th gonna be too late for warrants? Okay, the 26th will be too late for warrants.
Okay.
But do we only need four people for warrants?
Yeah, we only need a bare quorum. And obviously, if there's a larger agenda, I'll make sure that everybody's aware about the other topics that are gonna be out there. So...
Yeah, let's do the 23rd.
Okay. Did you get that, Diane?
10 o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. But thank you for bringing that up, John, because that's a good catch. Okay. Um, Katie had also brought up to me that there is a, that some of the parents at, she ran to at Center School the other day, uh, were a little concerned about the state of the playground. And as the community may remember, uh, the playground and, and the adjacent field were funded by town meeting as part of, uh, community preservation, um, funding. So, Tom, did you wanna just speak a little bit about what's going on with the playground?
Um, yeah. So, we've decided we've gone out and solicited quotes for the actual playscape equipment. We have two vendors who responded with pricing. And we are putting the site work for the playscape and the actual field under one general contractor. Um, DPW will oversee that project. They are developing specifications. Uh, we'd hope to have bids back by the end of September with a goal of, uh, work beginning hopefully at the end of October, the begin, at the end of October, beginning of November. Um, project I would estimate take maybe two to three weeks.
Okay. Great. Uh, is that good for you?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, as Marie had mentioned this morning, we had opening day and I did have the privilege to address the staff. And hopefully, they enjoyed what I had to say. Uh, but it was great to see everybody this morning. Everybody seemed very excited about the coming year, for the most part. Uh, some people were still in summer mode, but other than that, um, the high school dedication working group, I guess we're a working group, has been meeting. Uh, and we do have a lot of, we've done a lot. Um, Kim has designed all the invitations. I think everybody's had a chance to see them and they're beautiful. Uh, and we're gonna be sending out postcards to the entire community. So everybody's gonna know what day this is. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be on Saturday, September 28th at 10 o'clock a.m. here at Long Meadow High School in the front of the building. And, uh, there will be inside seating as well for, uh, for people who don't wanna be outside. Uh, Treasurer Grossman has already confirmed that he will be here. Uh, so that's an exciting thing. Um, we have also just finished the list for all of the actual invitations. Um, and we're sending out actual invitations to department heads, to members of boards and committees throughout the town, to building principals, to people who have been, you know, involved in this project from the very beginning. Uh, so, you know, those are gonna be nice. And, uh, we're also planning a dinner for, uh, residents who live near the high school. So pretty much grassy gutter, Woodside Drive, some people on Williams, some people on Bliss, and all of those side streets in between, uh, just to thank them for their patience and for suffering through the last three years of construction and dust and debris, uh, you know, vibrations. And, uh, so that's gonna be Thursday night, the 26th at 5:30. We're gonna do a, a light dinner for them and, uh, tours of the building. And hopefully, uh, you know, we get a good turnout because we do wanna say thank you to them. Uh, and then on Friday, the 27th, we are inviting the seniors to, uh, come. And Kayla Worland this morning told us that she would be happy to have her students put on a concert for, uh, our guests. And then we're gonna have lunch and tours for them as well. And then on Saturday, the main event, we'll do the dedication. And, uh, we will then cut the ribbon on the school, invite everybody in for some light refreshments and again, some tours of the school. A lot of touring going on. So it's really coming together. Uh, Katie's been invaluable. Kim's been invaluable. And, uh, I'm very excited about this. So it's coming along. Janet?
One question. Have, has anybody thought to contact the soccer board about soccer games over at Russell Field on that day?
No.
Um, might wanna do that because I know personally, my son's teams are scheduled for games. And I'm thinking parking for this event plus people wanting to attend,
Right.
there're gonna be conflicts. So, just heads up that Russell Field is currently slated to be used that Saturday for soccer games.
Good. We'll reach out to the soccer committee or, you know, soccer association.
Thank you. Hmm? Is that the name, Long Meadow Soccer Association? Yes.
So we'll, I'll, we'll reach out to them in the morning and make sure that they're aware. And if they have the opportunity to move games. And we'll obviously, I think Mike knows, but I'll, I'll reach out to Mike again tomorrow. Um, if they have the opportunity to rearrange their schedule a little bit, I, I hope they will, cause we're hopefully expecting a large crowd here, which would be great.
Yeah, Rachel, is that different than park and rec?
It's, yeah, it's a, they have an agreement with park and rec where they're able to use the fields.
I'm just thinking who we need to notify. If we need to do both or one would be a blanket.
They, I mean, Barry should know. If she doesn't know, she'll know soon that we are planning this event cause obviously she's invited. Um, so, I'll, I'll reach out to her and I'll make sure that we reach out to whoever's on, whoever heads the soccer association as well. Um, Saturday morning, I attended the tour of the DPW facility that Marie Angelides had invited all of us to. Uh, there was an interesting assortment of people there. There was members of the Conservation Commission, the Tree Committee, Select Board, Capital Planning, and Finance Committee. So it was well represented. Uh, Mike Rabel gave us a tour of the facility. And then a gentleman from Ty and Bond, who did its study in 2008, uh, gave a pretty, a pretty detailed report of the state of the facility. Uh, and I think that it's evident from being there that it's not a great facility. And, uh, I think based on the Select Board's urging that this tour occurs, that there's probably gonna be some movement in the next year or two to try to find a solution for the DPW, whether it's renovating or building or moving. I'm not sure, but, uh, John?
I was just wondering if there was any discussion of the fact that that building is located in a flood plain.
There was a large discussion.
It has flooded, uh, in the spring of 1984.
Yep.
There was, that whole area was underwater.
There was a discussion.
If they're gonna do anything down there, they're gonna have to put some kind of a, a bürmer and a dike system in to, to protect it, which is gonna add to the cost. Are they stuck on that location or are they thinking?
No. There's, there's some other locations that they've examined. Apparently in 2000, about three or four years ago, there was a committee that examined every possible location within a three-mile radius. Uh, they are not stuck on that, uh, that location. And apparent, the guy from Ty and Bond was saying that they can flood-proof a certain area of the, the land. But if they make it flood-proof, the understate law, they need to provide some sort of compensatory, uh, they need to be able, I mean, I forgot, it was a compensatory something, where they basically have to flood another area. They have to create exactly that much flood plain somewhere else along the Connecticut River in town. So if they take out 500 cubic yards of flood plain, they need to add it somewhere else, which is a very interesting concept to me. But, but it was a very interesting facility. I mean, they're doing, there's a lot that they're limited in doing. Uh, and there's a lot that is, uh, that they should be doing that they can't do. So regardless of, of what happens with that facility, there's some work that needs to be done. There's underground storage tanks that will need to come up soon. There are sewer line runs right through it that connects Emerson Road to Bondi's Island. There's a lot of interesting stuff that happened down there, so...
Well, just for the record, I'd like to just state, they've been talking about this for about the last seven years.
Mm-huh.
And it's like, it keeps coming up. There are other places that we might wanna prioritize. It's just one area.
Okay. So, but, you know, certainly it'll be interesting to see what the Select Board and how the, the town decide to move forward on that, uh, that subject. Um, last week, Tom and Marie and I had a meeting with Stephen Crane and Marie Angelides and Paul Pasturzik to kinda talk about what we thought some of the challenges of the coming year would be. Uh, it was a really good meeting. We had a conversation pretty much about budget at this point. And we talked about areas where we had some concerns and there shouldn't be any secret that we have a, you know, contract, contractual obligations that we need to fulfill. Uh, and the Select Board, and Marie had mentioned some areas where they had some concerns, like increase in healthcare costs. But the ultimate outcome of the meeting was that we would like to get the joint boards together again prior to the end of October to have a conversation about the budget directive, which is kind of an exciting prospect for me because I don't think that we've ever once been asked our opinion on what the directive should be. Uh, so we are looking to do that. What I had Diane print out for everybody potentially, or what if, yes, um, which should be on, in front of you, is a draft of the minutes from the last joint meeting. And because they're in front of you right now, I don't wanna talk about them per se. We can do that the next meeting. Uh, but we should obviously have a conversation about what the outcome of this was in areas where we can work together. One of the things that Marie had mentioned she would like to do is around Veterans Day is to have a lecture series in a series of veterans events, uh, with our cooperation. They'd like to be able to use the auditorium. We'd like to engage Key Club and other clubs in helping out the Wounded Warrior Run, uh, some areas where, you know, we have no real reason to say no. Um, and, you know, in the spirit of, of a community event. So, we'll, we'll have some more information on that as soon as it comes to us, but it was a very preliminary meeting, um, for right now. Next week, Jim and I are sitting down with Dan Healy to talk about the GFOA, uh, that the Finance Committee's pushing, that they're gonna be presenting to the Select Board next Monday night, which is basically a set of recommendations on increasing transparency and, uh, making the budget more approachable from a community standpoint. Uh, looking through the presentation, I think Jim and I can both agree, there's 14 points. We probably do 12 of them. So we're in pretty good shape. Uh, so we're just gonna hear what he has to say and get back to this committee on that. And finally, the last thing that I have to say, it's a long update. I've never had one this long, uh, is that Kim had brought up to me just a concern about a goal we'd set for ourselves at the last, at our goal-setting session, which was how do we respond to correspondence? Uh, and she cited a letter that we, two letters that we received from a parent and what our response should be, and particularly with regard to one-to-one computing, which I know that we've been talking about and dancing around. And I think that what we, at this point, what we realize is that we don't know. We don't have an answer on what it's gonna look like and we don't have an idea about exactly where it's gonna be implemented and exactly what we plan on, on how we plan on doing that. I mean, originally, it was gonna be K through 12 and now it might just be high school. And so, you know, if, if you feel comfortable, uh, obviously, I know you've, you've met with this parent, but I, you know, Ki- uh, Kim's been asked to go to Blueberry PTO and talk about it. I think we're gonna be getting questions from the community about it. And I think that the answer right now is that we're still working towards it. And we're gonna be involving the community as we come towards, you know, a solution on how to do it.
Might I suggest that if you field questions, that you let them know that the committee is meeting in September? And that we will have more information in that this is going to impact the high school and it will not impact K through eight?
I think that's pretty much what they wanna hear. I think they wanna hear that they're not going, it's not gonna impact K through eight or K through five.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the parents that I deal with more.
And feel free to direct them my way or to their principal. Right, Marie? Good.
Thanks.
But we'll definitely, we'll have something very soon.
Okay.
So, and we really haven't received much other correspondence. So, and we really haven't received much other correspondence to kind of fill in the rest of that question. But, you know, I think in kind of keeping with that theme, you know, what do we suggest as far as how do we respond? Do we talk about it as a committee and then, you know, issue a letter or, you know, obviously there's not, not everything that comes our way that we're going to respond to. But with questions like this that are about school committee initiatives, we certainly should respond because we are leaders in the community on this issue. So I mean, is that, that's how we want to proceed with that.
I think if you run it by, I mean, we've just kind of all said, yes, what you've said is great. And I think the correspondence went directly, did it go to you, the second correspondence on that specific?
I think it went to you, right?
No, it went to school committee.
It went to school committee.
Yep.
So I, I just think that we should actually respond to the communication.
Yeah.
So even if it's a, I'm not sure what's going on or whatever, I think we should just give some sort of.
Yeah.
Reply to the email so it's not sitting out there and.
Yeah, I, I call people back, what, I have not responded to this one.
Right.
But I normally call everyone back.
Okay.
To, to discuss it because when, especially when it's operational, I feel like I should respond to them, give them an answer. Fortunately, most of the time, people are happy with the call, but sometimes they just, they're not.
At least some sort of, at least you're giving them a response.
I'll call her again.
This one, I just think we should somehow just reply, you know, it's not going to, you're, it's not going to affect elementary school kids.
Yeah.
We're, we're discussing it in high school and there'll be another meeting in September is probably a very nice reply.
You can do that.
Okay.
I can do that.
All right.
Great. That's all I have. So it was a lot, but I promise in the future, there won't be too much.
Michael, could I respectfully ask that we put the principals?
Yes, what I was going to do is that I was going to allow Jim and John to give, and Liz to give the finance update. And because what they're here for ties into that, I was going to have their issue kind of dov- you know, cut, right out of the coattails of that.
Fabulous, thank you.
And they, they knew about that. I told them. So.
You're all set?
We're all set, so finance report.
Hey, John, since you were there and I was out of the meeting, yourself and Liz, can you keep this summary? Let's make that point.
Okay, I'm going to pass it on to Tom. There is a, a vote that we took at the meeting, and that is on the agenda for later on. But Tom will fill us in on the detail.
Yeah, there were a couple of items on the agenda. Sue Bertrand was there to give an update on special education and just some staffing changes that are going to be taking place with some additional ed assistance positions that are being added to the budget that were not planned for, for one student moving into the district from an out-of placement that we had budgeted for last year. So there, we'll be adding an ed assistant for that individual. And there's also a student moving into the district from out of state that we had to add an ed assistant for. So that was, the major issue that she was there was to let Finance Subcommittee know about that. Also.
When you say you had, were taking a student who was in district but, who was living in district but was in an out-of district placement back in the schools?
Yes.
Or, okay, just so.
Yes, bringing them back in from an out-of district placement. I updated the Finance Subcommittee to let them know that we did turn back $195,000. The vote that the school committee took was up to 195, but with, when all the numbers were done for the year, we hit the total of 195. So we did turn that back for FY 13, which is just a little over one and a half percent of our budget. Middle school reading books, there was some curriculum work that was done at the end of June to really help bolster the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade ELA work. And there was a commitment to purchase some reading materials for the middle schools that we really found out about kind of midsummer. And so we felt obligated to move forward to fund the purchase so that the materials would be in and available for the start of the school year. It's approximately $9,200. And they, they were paid for out of school choice funds, one-time expenditure, kind of going along with the policies or the guidelines that school committee has for use of those funds. And the last item that John referenced is that there was discussion around requests for an increase or an addition of a teaching position at both Blueberry for Grade One and at Glenbrook for sixth grade. Included in your packet are some enrollment, historical numbers back when the budget was developed, and the number of students that we currently have enrolled at this time, and what the average class size would be if we did not, if we do not, if the committee does not entertain approving these increases. So Finance Sub took that up and voted to recommend approval of a position for each of those schools in those grades based on the discussion. And I'm sure the superintendent would like to add more to that.
I think that we have been watching the numbers pretty carefully. It's been, when the budget is formed, I think the question is always rightfully asked, did you know this was going to happen? And the answer is, no, we didn't. We look at the NASDAQ projections, we look at our protection, projections, we look at the information in front of us at that time. And if you take a look at particularly Blueberry Hills, I had Marie track what happened in January, for going into Grade One, there were 48 students. By August, there were 70 students. We can't.
There are 72.
72 right now? Okay.
Two more? Yes, I have that.
The, the families continue to come in, numerous, every, numerous registrants, registrants every single day. So it's, it's unpredictable. Glenbrooks was a smaller increase, but we had already had, you know, a larger class size with the Glenbrook sixth grade.
If I could just add to that, then, this is a good faith effort on our part. It wasn't a surprise. But if you look at the sheet we have in front of us, January, it was 48. March, it was 51. April, it's 53. It kept climbing. And all we can do is count the heads as they come in and do the best and make the plans according to the latest data. But I, I want the audience to know that we were not unprepared for this. We were planning as best we could, but we can't control the number of people who are moving into town. As a matter of fact, that's one of the things we like to cite, that people are moving into the town to take advantage of our school system. And they are.
Tom, we reduced a section of first grade at Blueberry in this current budget, correct? So we're just restoring that. We reduced two sections?
Two sections.
Okay, so we're restoring one section, correct?
Correct.
And then we reduced the fifth grade section at center, and we're restoring, and we'd be adding a section to Glenbrook. So we're kind of still net negative one as far as sections go. Is that, I mean, is that fair to say?
Well, as far as sections, we're not as far as the budget is concerned.
Not as far as the budget, but.
As far as the budget is concerned.
Yes. High level number.
Do we have?
Well, I worked out, so I'd say.
So it works out to negative one.
We do not have teachers that we can recall. We are, we would post the positions.
So we have to start from scratch to interviews?
We are hopeful that we will be able to expedite the hiring process and have people on board for the first day of school. The ELA in the past has worked with the administration to allow for a hiring process with a shortened period of the posting. It usually is a two-week posting period. They've allowed us to post it until filled, and Diane's indicating that.
And they have done that.
They've already agreed to allow us to do that if the funding's approved tonight.
Okay. In addition, the, the principals have been hiring for the past couple of months. So it's, it's not as bad as it sounds. There are candidates that they have in mind already because they've, they've done hiring at similar grades, and all the principals are collaborating on who the good candidates might be that are, that are out there.
Great. So without further ado, do we feel comfortable making a motion?
Yes.
I don't have that scheduled yet.
Yes.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the addition of Grade One teacher at Blueberry Hill School and a Grade Six teacher at Glenbrook Middle School to alleviate large class sizes.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. The only other thing that I'm going to keep Dan here for, but we're going to do it now, is Dan has his handbook in front of us. So Dan, do you want to approach the microphone? Glenbrook Bulldogs. There's a wildcat.
Hey.
But it's okay.
So we, this summer, we did work diligently and producing a, an updated handbook. As you look through it, in, in keeping with kind of what our goals and what our policies have been, we've tried to streamline this to be very similar with Williams and creating more of a middle school handbook, very similar to our curriculum and our grading processes and so forth. So any small or minor changes that may have occurred would have been very similar to the policies in which, in which Williams has already enacted. The first major change that we've made to our old handbook in regard to policy would be our extended absence policy for non-medical absences. That is on page four of our handbook. And basically, we added a line to the bottom. It's in boldface print that basically says, after two weeks of being back at school, no additional credit will be awarded for outstanding work. And this is for students who have had an extended absence of five or more consecutive days, that once they do return to work, return to school, they will be allotted two weeks to complete those assignments. And, you know, we feel that that's a pretty extensive time period. And certainly, there are extenuating circumstances, given IEPs and 504 plans. However, for the, for the majority of the students, that this would be a, a direct Additionally, on page seven, with a, an additional or a, a very much improved or added curriculum based on writing, we've added a number of sentences in regard to academic honesty. We had a rise in, in students basically not being academically honest in regard to submission of their work. So if we, if we read through that paragraph in the second sentence, or the third sentence, I'm sorry, second line, we asked, we asked all students that they not copy their work from fellow classmates or from textbook, textbooks or reference materials in the library. Additionally, we also want to make sure that they're not downloading information from the internet directly and that we consider this behavior a form of stealing. Moving on to page 11, in regard to student conduct and discipline, we've basically added additional language towards the bottom third of that paragraph in boldface in regard to bullying and being respected as a student. And we ask that they feel, feel that they do not have to put up with being bullied or disrespected in this school by your peers, and that they are to let us know if you are having any problems, and we will work with them to solve, and their parents to solve those problems. And the final policy change is on page 14. And here, we've basically just outlined it, outlined in clear terms, the disciplinary terms used at the middle school level. So these are exactly what Williams has in their handbook in regard to the offense and the possible discipline. And certainly, there's a wide range, and they're subject to, you know, the administrative interpretation of the severity of the misbehavior. However, this is all dealing with the code of conduct for the, the district, for Long Metal Public Schools. You know, additionally, I would like to add again, or touch again, that this is very similar to the handbook that has been previously approved by Williams Middle School.
Any questions for Dan? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't need to vote on it, right? No. We do? Whoops. All right, hang on just one more second. There's no, there's no, okay, that's why I didn't realize it. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the Glenbrook Middle School handbook for 2013, 2014?
So moved.
As presented.
Second?
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Great, thank you.
Sorry for keeping you so long.
No problem. Have a good night.
Okay. Back to the top. SBC update, I think we actually pretty much got a good one, unless there's more.
Yeah, there is more, there's well, one, one, two more things, I guess, Marie, or Tom, we got to follow up on. One is, at that meeting, we asked about the MDF room, the server room.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to be two weeks, you get an update on what the plan was. So it is two weeks. Haven't heard anything back. So there's, there's two issues there. One is the air conditioning unit needs to be moved to a more efficient place as far as cooling the servers in the room. And the other is one of, do we or do we not build a redundant system to address issues of case of failure? I'm strongly an advocate for a redundant system just because that makes sense to me in my past experience. But we have to get people on board. But the bottom line is, it's two weeks, we're expecting some, something back from Bobby or the other guy, which I'll have to remember, Tom.
Rob, Tom Murphy.
Tom Murphy, yeah.
Rob Elger. Tom Murphy would be the one.
We're supposed to come back and do something. So we haven't heard back. We had a follow-up on that.
So the update, they said they continue to not be able to put their hands on information?
No, the MDF room's a different issue.
That's, but is, is that part of, is that separate then, or is that part of the punch list?
It's a separate issue. It's a, no, it's actually not on the punch list right now for some reason. It should, hopefully, it should be added. But this is an issue specifically to the environmental control of the server room.
But it's the same people that are responding to our request for information about the problem?
Oh, it's the same, yes, we say.
So that's, yeah, it's the same, they just.
Yes.
So talked about building naming. I guess the only other issue is, I assume, since we're in the building, that the temporary occupancy certificate was all signed and done?
It's an assumption on my part. Tom's not.
Hopefully, hopefully it was?
Yes, it was.
Because that was an issue of conversation. And that's, that's why, there was an executive session, but I can't go through that. So we'll, we'll do it later.
Well, there is one other issue. I don't know if you're aware of this. There is another computer closet over here, and it, the assumption was that it belonged to LCTV. It's partially ours and partially LCTVs. There's no air conditioning in there either. And I won't throw out numbers, but it was a significant amount of money that they need to put an air conditioner in there. So this is like the MDF room, and it's a, I, I understand.
So I don't want to give a long discussion, but, but we all, all understand that computers, especially server racks, create a lot of heat.
Yep.
Yes.
Right? And they need air conditioning to keep, keep the room cool. It's just needed. And, and so, and it ought to be redundant because a lot of valuable information is in there, including the value and the cost of the hardware in case it fails. So, so you need both a primary system to keep something cool and a secondary system in case that primary doesn't work, right? So we ought to go through and identify all those and just get this thing locked and loaded because it just doesn't work. I don't, I, it's hard to understand that we get this far and.
So we have two rooms that have a similar.
Yeah, there's, it sounds like, there's one downstairs, not, I'm actually in the wrong building now, but, but one downstairs in the main high school area.
There's one.
And then, I guess there's one over here.
And is this the same battle we're ha- um, kind of like?
The requirements were not specified clearly, depending on who you want to talk to, from, hey, how much cooling capacity do you need? Where do you need the cooling capacity? What's the room going to be used for? And it doesn't need to be redundant. The argument would be, well, you're building a computer room, you should know that, right?
Aren't we paying them to know that, though? Because we are not the experts on construction and architecture and that kind of stuff?
and architecture and that kinda stuff?
The only, the only thing I will defend the con, the architect for a little bit is, if you not know specifically what you're putting in the room, how much power you're gonna dissipate, where it's gonna be located, it's hard to actually design a room. However, that being said, there ought to be, if you're putting a computer room in, somebody else asks, "What am I actually gonna be doing in it?" Right? I mean, so there should have been some conversation back and forth.
And Jim, I was at those meetings. Kevin was explicit on what was going to be in those rooms.
So there clearly is a, a problem here. Now, you're at the, past the end, you know, the goal line right now, because you're actually running. We're running the servers that are running and potentially in trouble, and I know Kevin's had to go through and field issues, he's had to replace hardware and so on. So it's actually, the urgency level is very high right now to get the systems set up properly, get the redundancy set up properly, so we don't have to worry about it and, um, and move on.
Well, starting on Tuesday.
This actually doesn't have the, you don't have to worry about school starting, you actually have to worry about the fact, the servers are being used right now, right? So.
We're just hoping they're not gonna overheat.
Yeah, you got it, right. And in some cases, they've already have, um, and we've replaced hardware and so on.
So what do we have in there right now until we solve the problems that we don't have?
Some temporary air conditioning units.
You have a four-ton air, uh, two-ton air conditioner. We're, I want four. We have two, we have two, a two-ton air conditioner. If you think of a server being located here, it's on the front. Heat comes out there. You actually need to get the air conditioner back over here. Um, I don't know what's in this cabinet over here.
It's a temporary unit that is exhausted up into the space above.
So, so the bottom line is, in my personal opinion, it's an urgent issue that needs to be resolved.
I agree with you.
And, and we look for the architects and, and Tom and those guys to go get this thing nailed down. And that's, Tom Murphy, I don't wanna confuse the Toms, Tom Murphy, Bobby Parkette, and those guys need to take this on.
And I, I think it's very good that they're coming in to meet with us, so that we have clear answers and timelines. That MDF room, that problem has been going on now for how many months?
Well, it took forever to get just people in a room to understand it's a problem.
Six months ago.
So.
It's been unfortunate.
I'm gonna hold off, go ahead.
Okay, Katie?
I, I'm just stunned that this is, you know, millions and millions of dollars, that it's ju, you know, and everybody's kinda looking around like, you know, not, I mean, you know, the people that we have entrusted are this building with are sorta like, oh, jeez.
Mm-hmm.
Jeepers, that's, that's lousy. And I, I, I mean, I just, I'm flabbergasted. It's, I had, I heard, uh, there is no hot water. Is there hot water now?
I didn't know there was.
I didn't hear that one.
There was no hot water, and when the teacher said, gee, I'd like some hot water, they said, "I don't think you know how to turn on hot water," was the explanation, that he wasn't turning the faucet on correctly.
I think we should be careful about rumors.
Yeah, I would.
But this is not, this is like the experienced firsthand, you know, what am I, what do I have to say about the fact that this teacher experienced?
Was that, when was that, February?
No, today.
Oh.
But we have automatic water.
Yeah, but it wasn't, there was no hot.
Oh, then it's not calibrated.
So, I'm, you know, it just, and it seems like everybody kinda, you know, the, you know, and our architect, construction people just continue to kinda look around without, you know, we have six months left to do this before a timeline ends?
We, we have no end, because we can withhold money.
But by the time that our year ends in February.
We can still withhold money.
But they don't have to do anything, is that?
They won't get paid the rest of the money that we owe them.
So is the money we're withholding enough to cover this if we had to hire the proper people to get it done?
That's a good question to ask when they come.
I, I think we should.
Yeah, the, the issues, there's, that gets a complex answer, but I'm gonna get it short, the way I told, is the contractor has signed up for a maximum price contract, right? So everything needs to be done, whatever it costs him, if it costs more than we've already paid him over by maximum price, he still has to close and do it.
By February, or?
Well, it didn't give a date, I'm not too sure.
Well, no, I'm, that's what I mean, it's a, it's.
I think a year after the occupancy date, which would be like a year after.
Which would be February.
Yeah, in case we actually sign up, not, uh, not temporary occupancy, but an occupancy, right? So, I lost my train, oh, I'm back.
I'm sorry.
So, so that's all right. So, so the issue is, we're paying a maximum money to finish the job, right? So, and he's got a maximum contract price, so, 'cause he's gotta get it done within that maximum contract price. It won't cost us any more to do that. The, the issues become, uh, one, which we think we might've worked our way through, that, hey, for instance, if I use a server room as an example, you never told me about that, right? So it's an extra cost, and, and you can kinda go back and forth. But we think that's gonna be a wash. However, uh, at the end of the day, um, this budget is coming in very, very, very close, right? And so, and so, um, there's not a lot of money floating around, and people are talking about holding back money. The real issue is, we've paid them a lot of money already, so there's not a lot of money to hold back. Uh, it's really pushing them to get the job done.
We do, okay.
And just making sure they.
It's more about getting it worked.
Right. And making sure you stay on top of them to get the job done, and you have decent plans to get the job done. And that's why this punch list is, can be so irritating, because it, it, it should be repeating myself, I understand, but it should be readily available and easy to understand and trackables, right? So, so reverting to my old days, we ought to have a list of what's there, not only what's there, but how long has it been there? So you have the aging, and then when are you gonna get it done? So you could see something that's brand new, you know, let's say this room just came up and it's brand new, okay, put it on the list. It could be something that's been on the list for a year.
Right.
And say, well, what's, what's going on? All right, so, so you can look at aging, what the item is, how important it is, and when's the planning to get done? That's what we need to know. And that's why I told Bobby and Teen that day, all right?
Yeah.
About five times. So hopefully, we'll get there for me.
I must have the same conversations, but I, I do thank school committee, and again, I, I thank Jim, because his consistent questions are, are hopefully getting us to that point. And I, John's at every single meeting too, but I think we really need to have the reporting to the school committee, because we, ultimately, we are going to be left with.
Right.
What's, what's ever done and not done in that building.
I mean, listen, they have done a fantastic job.
Yep.
With this building. There's no question about that. But now that we're coming down to the wire, and we are increasingly becoming nervous about the state of the building as it's gonna be left to us, which is, you know, it's great, but obviously, there's things we need, we need fixed. We need to be able to hold people accountable, especially people who are paying a lot of money, uh, to do stuff. So I, I, you know, and it's, it's now, like I said earlier, it's now our prerogative. Now that we're occupying these buildings, it's our prerogative as well. So, uh, I look forward to them joining us at the next meeting. Anything else?
No, so I opened up a can of worms, if that's.
Yeah, well, listen, it is a can of worms.
Do we have at, um, like a collection of school building committee minutes that we can have available, so that when we, when they say some, you know, it's, we have differing viewpoints of the understanding of like the M, what?
MDF.
MDF room.
Though we can say, well, here on the minutes, you know, it was explained to you on this date, and.
I mean, their minutes should be available on the website.
Minutes are, God, I know, I haven't read the, so I just don't know the thing, but I, I know they do have them.
They have, okay.
Katie, so many of these dialogues take place offline.
That it's.
There are subcommittees, we meet down in Tony's area, it, um.
It's hard to.
I, I've had countless, and that's when I asked Jim to get involved, because it, you kept getting answers that sounded like there were technical problems that I shouldn't, I shouldn't know about. So when Jim stepped in, we're still at the same place, so. But you won't be able to trace a lot of them, because they're continual conversations offline.
All right.
Can I just add that?
Yeah.
Currently, the high school building committee is still in charge of this building, correct?
Yes.
And it's not gonna be turned over to us, it's gonna be turned over to the DPDW, correct? Because the Department of Public Works owns the buildings.
I don't believe so. I do believe it gets turned over to the school committee. DPDW maintains them, but the school committee has the jurisdiction over the buildings themselves.
Well, anyway, it's not gonna be turned over from the high school building committee until a good number of those items on that punch list are taken care of. And it's also my understanding that, in essence, the high school building, well, the high school project is answerable to a troika. There's the architect, drew up the plans, then there's the contractor, the general contractor, that's Gil Bayne, and the off, uh, Tim Murphy, who is, what's his title? I forget.
OPM.
The OPM, which is, means what?
Owner project manager.
Owner project manager. So there's that troika of people who are carrying this deal forward. And I don't wanna give away some information that came up at a executive session, but there is tension between them, as there should be, and, uh, that tension is continuing. There's no one saying, "We're just gonna roll over and accept things." And that's why I think it's very important not to spread rumors. There's some people out there who still regret the fact that we ever appropriated the money to build this in the first place. But the building is ninety-nine percent.
Right.
Done well. Uh, and we're talking about a figure, ballpark of less than one percent.
Yeah.
And that's what we are hoping to whittle down.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna offer that, that's my clarification, my interpretation.
And I agree with you. I think that that's.
Well, okay. And really saying so the audience, if there is one listening to us, will not get alarmed that the building's in trouble. It's not. It's moving forward in a very respectable manner. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
It would just, it, it's unfortunate to have these things overshadow the building and how well it's come out, when it's, and, and these are not small. It's not to be, I don't wanna diminish the importance of them or overstate them. It's things that we're taking seriously, because we value the amount of money and time and effort that's done into it.
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, and I think that our colleagues on the school building committee feel the same way, we wanna ensure that this project is done the way the town intended. Uh, and now that we're here and, and living in it, you know, these, these issues are our problems as, as well as their, the school building committee's problems, you know? And we, I think, have an obligation, and I hope the community would want us to have an obligation to ensure that school building committee is, is right where they need to be on some of the issues that we think are important, like, you know, our servers, which we do own, and we do have to pay for. And, you know, last time we lost servers, Kevin had to spend how many days? Three days? Four days pulling assessor records off, so we can get tax bills out in time? I mean, that's not a adequate scenario for us. So.
Just one other fact, I think, that's relevant, and that's, before every, um, high school building committee meeting, there's a tour conducted by Tim Murphy and the architect usually there, and the contractor. So, those of us who are on that committee can actually eyeball the situation, and, and you see something like doors that didn't close properly, or didn't even meet each other, and ask why. So when we get to the, the meeting, we have some empirical information to work from. And, uh, and.
Right.
That adds to, uh, holding their feet to the fire and keeping it responsible.
Well, that actually is a really good point that you just brought up, and I'm wondering if it would be beneficial for them to conduct a similar tour with us next week before our, or in two weeks before our meeting.
I think that'd be a great idea.
How do we feel about them? Okay, and then we can ask them those questions on camera, too. So, all right, so I will, one of us will, we'll put that out there. So, you know, how long are those tours? Usually an hour?
A little over an hour.
Okay, so we'll say like five forty-five. Try to arrange it, so that we have enough time. Okay, cool.
You're saying before September ninth?
Yeah, I mean, I would say probably right before that meeting. If that, does everybody think that's a good idea? So, okay, cool. And moving right along, uh, legislative update.
Uh, the great general court is not in session, so there's nothing happening. And they have a good excuse for that now. They're not in session.
Right.
As much is happening now as is that.
Yes. All right, green team. And before Liz goes, uh, for green team, I attended the custodians' luncheon the other day, and Liz works really hard, uh, for, with Arlene and with everybody to make sure that this building opened with all of the right buckets and all of the right components to ensure that the recycling, uh, program here works. Uh, and so I just wanna give Liz some recognition, because last week, we did get together and thank the custodians for everything they do to make sure that the recycling happens at all the buildings, but Liz and Arlene Miller have really been a driving force to make sure that happens, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, well, I was just gonna talk about quickly the, um, uh, thank you party that we did have for the custodians. Uh, we wanna thank you, um, for getting the buildings back in great shape for this week, and, um, also, everything that they do throughout the year, and in terms of keeping the building clean, and also their tremendous efforts, um, with the recycling and keeping it going with all the schools. Thank you. And, um, I think that's all we have right now.
Sure. John, you have a question?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but, um, are we gonna try and do something about plastic bottles and styrofoam? I know styrofoam's been on the agenda for a number of years, and plastic bottles is a major problem in terms of, you know, uh, trash and, and, and they're not being recycled properly.
Right.
Can we do anything in terms of a school system?
Well.
To help alleviate the, the problems, both of those engendered?
Um, styrofoam, uh, I believe that we have talked to Witson's, our new food service company, and that, um, we expressed to them that we did not want styrofoam used. So we'll see what happens with that, um, in terms of cost for trays and getting trays for every, for every student. Um, and then the bottles, it's really hard, because that's something that, um, we make money off of, of the vending machines for bottles. Um, so we'll have to visit that with food service as well. But I'm gonna, we're gonna have recycling meeting in September, I'm going to arrange it for our green team, and we can talk about it.
And I would just add real quick, I did talk to Megan Schwartz this morning, who is the community service learning teacher, as well as the history department chair, and she actually just became certified as a green teacher. So she's a green instructor, and the first project that community service learning will be working on this year is being pushed along by a grant that she applied for with Arlene Miller, uh, which would give them some funding to buy bottles, reusable, plastic bottles, that would have like a Lancer logo or a Long Meadow High School logo, that they're gonna sell to the student body and then continue to produce them, so.
But they're made out of plastic?
They are made out of plastic, or they could be metal.
Plastic is, no, no, we're not supposed to go near plastic.
They might be metal.
They might be metal.
Well, if they're metal, then I hope they're stainless steel, not aluminum.
I, I, yeah, I mean.
I've been reading about this issue.
Yes.
And, and I think, you know, we're, we're trying to be a green school.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gearing up for the twenty-first century. This is a crucial problem. There's a new bottle bill being sponsored by, uh, a number of folks for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it's been fought by a large number of vested interests who do not wanna see any change. They wanna keep on selling carbonated beverages and in plastic containers, even though there's some, uh, evidence now that, uh, chemicals leak from the plastic bottle into the fluid that's contained therein. So, now, I just raise this as an issue. I, I really think we ought to get going on this. We've been talking about it for years, and I'm not blaming Liz, 'cause she and I were on the green committee when this came up a couple of years ago, and we've been pushing it, so, just wanna.
Yeah, we'll get more information on what Megan's working on.
Keep the fire going.
Yeah. Plus, as you walk through the new high school, we've got these really great water fountains that are for bottles, so, you know, pretty good. Nifty. All right, op sub.
Let's get together.
I, I actually thought it was both for op sub, just cover two, op sub and middle school working group. Uh, my proposal was, I was gonna kinda email amongst my teammates here and create a charter for both, and then show it next, in our next, um, meeting.
Sure.
And see if we can get concurrence on the charter to say, you know, what do you, here's what the team's meant to do, and then if we all go, you know, gay barely, that sounds good to me, we'll go off and do it.
I would just caution, uh, how you email them, make sure you, make sure you're okay.
I know, I, I'll figure that out.
Yeah, figure it out. Don't break the law. Uh, that sounds fine.
I mean, the charter will be presented here, right? So we won't go off in March without getting the charter approved by everybody, so. But instead of setting out teams, you know, go forth and do something, uh, I think getting concurrence with everybody, what the actual plan would be, or what the main, the objective would be, would be a good thing.
Great. CL?
Um, nothing new.
Uh, policy.
Uh, we start meetings September.
Okay. Great.
How about Lower Pioneer Valley?
Oh, collaborative, sorry.
Okay. That, we had our first meeting last, for the new season, uh, last Wednesday. Pretty much routine, uh, you know, fund allocation. But everyone should be aware that we're now in, um, collective bargaining with the bus drivers, and that's a number of people in the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative who are dependent on bus drivers. And, um, so that's ongoing. There's nothing to report right now.
Thanks, John. All right, other, um, oh, I do have one piece before we move on to Marie. Um, I have drafted, and I forgot to send around, but I've drafted the proposed warrant article for Balltown Meeting regarding the, uh, Ian Wax Tree of Courage in the front hallway. Uh, and basically, as the warrant article is written now, the funds that are collected would go to support student, uh, community service activities. And Tom had mentioned that we may not wanna limit ourselves to community service activities if, for instance, we could support students going on a trip, or students, something we talked about earlier. And so, I'm gonna probably change the language to just say student activities, um, although there's still a grant, uh, process that is involved in that aspect of it. So, that's, we don't really need to take any action on it, 'cause the committee did get me, give me permission to write it, so I'll send it out to you.
Have we submitted, uh, language for?
No, but it's been reviewed by town council.
But aren't, it's what?
It has been reviewed by town council.
So then why aren't we submitting it?
I was gonna make that one change and then give it to them. We have till September fifth to, to submit it.
I was gonna say, we're up against a deadline.
We're up against a deadline. It's written. I'm gonna make one change. Uh, but I just wanted to give you all that information about that change so that down the road, we don't limit ourselves to just saying it's for community service projects when there could be a worthy cause. Um, but it is good to go. So I'm gonna make that change tomorrow, get it back to Dave Martell, and we should be good.
So is that, is it gonna, is it gonna have like the same approval board
Yeah.
that'll go through?
Yeah. And that's, I mean, the warrant article is not concerning how funds are distributed per se. It's about what the qualification for money to be spent is.
Oh, okay. And if we, if we say community service and we
It were relegated to that. Um, and basically, the way that we have to write it is that because we're the, originally, we were gonna leave it to the high school to decide what's good, and we're still gonna, you know, leave it to Larry and whatever team he assembles. But they will, it will have to be approved by this board every time there's a grant, which is not uncommon. So, that's just what I wanted to bring up real quick. And Marie, curriculum review.
Coming from budget concerns, the question arose how we can begin to address curriculum needs without having to come back at the end of the year for money. So Jim and I were talking about curriculum reviews, and I thought this would be a good time to just go through what a curriculum review is and how we're going to be working on it over the next several years. Uh, the, it's a continuous cycle, and the very first thing is student achievement. We want all of our students to excel, and so the question is, how do we help them excel? And we do that through planning the curriculum, making sure that we identify what kids should know and be able to do, and that we are able to identify what supports we have in place when they don't, when they don't know, or they know more than they, than their peers do. Once curriculum is in place, we go through instructional strategies, and with the instructional strategies comes the need for materials, as teachers decide how they're going to teach it, how they're going to implement it, what materials are needed to do that. And that's frequent when we come back to school committee looking for money. Once instruction begins, then we assess students to see if learning is taking place, so that you have the curriculum, it's being taught, are students really mastering it? Are they learning? And we're, we're looking at assessment tools that, we talked about grade and G made no longer being effective with the Common Core. We're looking and talking about Ames Web, and we're looking at other assessment tools right now that we'll be coming back and sharing with you more. Once students are assessed, you have students that don't, that have not made progress, substantial progress, and that's where RTI comes in. We've talked a lot about that, response to intervention. Where tier one is when students get help in the classroom. Curriculum is differentiated, curriculum is broken down, so that students are either being challenged to give an extra help. Tier two is when they actually get a double dose of the class that they're taking, so that they may get double math, or they may get double ELA, so that you can help them master the material. The, um, the third tier is when they need more extensive services, for example, special education, because it's not helping to give them that intensive second tier of learning, uh, and that they're going to need more on a long-term basis. So that, that's basically the cycle, and then once you do those interventions, it goes back where you're looking at student achievement and you begin all over again. Okay? Any questions on that part? Jim?
On timing, I think the issue for me is timing.
It is.
Is because this instruction kind of purple block down here?
Yep.
Is when the teachers are deciding what they want or what they need for their curriculum that they plan coming up. You know, that's, that's when we're asking the question of, hey, what, what, what books do you need? What facilities do you need? What technology do you need? It has to be early enough in the year to allow us to, to assess it and vote on it and get the mon, money, you know, to it and that type of thing.
And that's where it gets a little bit complicated. For example, one of the issues that we ran into this year was the reading books for the middle school. Uh, so when we needed those books, the work had been done on the curriculum the last week in June. Extra money became available, so we were able to let teachers do more curriculum work than we had planned, and which is what we wanted to do. But coming from that, their new instruction included these books. So it was last minute because we were able to fund this, this staff development. The dilemma with the budget is that we don't put money aside for curriculum materials, and we don't really fund enough for teachers to be working on curriculum and instruction. And we're always, um, we're always looking for end-of-the-year funds to do that. The solution would be to build it into the budget, but in the past, when that was done and we built in a hundred thousand dollars for materials, that's always one of the things that's taken out of the budget.
I think we ought to bring that up in our FIN sub meeting. I think there's a way around that.
Okay.
Without bringing this meeting down right now, I think we can talk about that. I mean, I really would like a timeline that allows us to take appropriate action without getting right down to the very crutch. You know, allows us time to, to think about it, talk about it, decide, you know, appropriately what should be done.
And with the curriculum review, that's going to help, but I ca, I, I can't say that it will always solve the problem, because there are initiatives that come up that, no matter how much we try to plan, you can't, you can't predict that they're going to come up and that, that, um, things like the, the books, because there are changes in curriculum, and then you get the group together and instruction. But let's take a look at the review, because I think this will answer a lot of the questions that you have. A curriculum review should be done where everything is studied. In the past couple of years, we've spent time, the very first curriculum review that I initiated was elementary literacy. There were, if you looked at the MCAS data and you talked to teachers, students were having problems reading and writing. So that was the very first thing that we did. We then moved into the middle school literacy. We did that early enough so that we knew we were going to need materials, but what we haven't clearly identified is what's going to happen over the next three to four years. And that's what this chart's beginning to do. We've given two years to almost every cycle, so that we know the first year, they'll be looking at the curriculum, they'll be identifying instruction, and at the end of that first year, they should be given either money to buy the materials or to pilot. But definitely by the end of the second year, they should have funds to purchase, um, the materials that they need. When it's their curriculum review year, then they should be definitely allocated funds. Now, part of the dilemma will be, if you take a look in two thousand thirteen, you, there'll be several reviews going on. Social studies will be a major one. We'll start, um, we'll start PE, that hasn't started yet. We'll look at, um, special education, and we'll continue with the high school math. So out of those areas, we won't know until we get into the review how much money they're going to need. Uh, and I can't predict that until they get into it, so that it, it's very hard to budget. But I think going to finance subcommittee, it would definitely be worth having a discussion, is there's a way that you could suggest that would help us fund better than what we're currently doing?
I think, um, more detailed conversation in FIN sub, but, but an easy initial approach would be, you're expecting a curriculum review to produce some results that would say, I need to buy something, change it. The curriculum review probably would not likely come out with no change.
Correct.
Assuming, right? I mean, so, so if you say, any curriculum review I do, if I have to, if I have to buy new texts for a normal class, it's somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars. My rough span of numbers, right? And so you say, hey, if I'm doing five new curriculum reviews, finance sub, school committee, school budget, you're on hook somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars for books.
Yeah, well, some can be seventy-five thousand.
Right. So you sit there and say, we ought to at least take that, and we can start kind of broadbasing. Well, if that's the case, where would this come from?
Right.
So those are the kind of conversations we could have in FIN sub. But to assume that nothing will come out of a curriculum review would be wrong, or else we wouldn't
Oh, it will, it will come.
So, so we know in the year twenty thirteen now, we're doing all these reviews, that there is going to be some requests coming from them.
Yep.
Right? And we can prepare ourselves for it.
Right.
I'm not too sure how right now, but we could, we could go do that as part of the FIN sub. Smiling.
And some of it, Jim, is more predictable. When I talk to the, um, high school social studies teachers, they've clearly already identified they need, and need a new book or a new online learning, uh, tool for the students. But like, things like PE, I don't know. I don't know what materials they need. Would they move it to help? So that would be a more precarious guess.
I'm just saying, for every one of those that are just starting in twenty thirteen, we know that there is a request that would be coming our way.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We'd hope, anyway.
Definitely. I'm sure there will be.
Okay.
So.
So I think that's how we would, so we can talk about it in more detail, but I think we can lay that out.
Okay. But this, this is helpful because this means that at least every five years, you're looking at the curriculum, you're working on it, you're enhancing it. There are some things like literacy that should never be taken off the curriculum review because you need to continually work at that to improve that. RTI and other things should continually be going on, too. Also, if you note at the bottom, there are certain things that we're working on that will have cost implications as well. You have RTI assessment, the district determined measure committees, educator evaluation may, Atlas Universal Screening, so that as we're embedding these into our curriculum reviews, it's this type of thing that will also add cost to what we're doing. So. Any questions?
Maybe this a little bit, so forgive me the question. Um, when we're doing, going through the review process, are we reviewing what they're currently doing right now against the Common, Common Core and what other high schoolers and middle schoolers and elementary schoolers are doing in other school districts so that we can try and, and also taking that information and comparing it to our MCAS scores? Like, how do we get, um, to the end result as to what they feel they need?
For example, literacy, we gave out literature and best practices. We, um, we send people out to workshops and conferences with some of the best people in the country. Uh, last summer, we, we brought in, this past summer, this one, we brought in someone from, associated with Columbia University on writing. So we try and find the best in the field, and we send at least some people out. Then we do some reading and we talk about it. We do look at what other districts are doing, if they've done well on things like the MCAS or they just, you know, reputation that we've heard about. So we do check in with them. And after we do that, then we begin to break it down. What do we want to do? We actually identify what everyone's doing at every single grade level. And for literacy, it's around, what are you doing in writing? What are you doing in, um, reading? There's vocabulary, there are all these facets to that. And once that all broken down, you have to, you have to somehow get it together. I'll give you an example, writing. We had, um, the staff in K through five all brought in what was considered an average writing sample, and it's, it's a sorting effort that you do. We then hung up three from, um, every teacher brought one from their grade, and when you hung them up and looked at them, you could tell that, um, that third to fourth grade, there was a dip in writing, that the writing was not, the expectations were not as high by comparing writing. So we use all kinds of tools like that, and then we bring out exemplars from the MCAS so people can see. But then when you get to that, you're redoing the curriculum and, uh, then you're setting expectations. When you have exemplars, too, for example, the fourth grade teachers knew, okay, knew that we have to ratchet it up some, because the writing is, is not as, um, progressing at the same speed as some of the other grades.
Okay. Thanks.
That was a good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love having the whiteboard here, too. This is nice.
There's no fidgeting. It's great. You guys are always doing it through the urine, right? Okay. The lights go on here?
They're just turned off.
They're just turned off. Sorry. I've been watching the lights go off in the hallway. So, all right. Next up is the approval of warrants.
Okay. I move that the school committee approved the warrant batch number twenty-two hundred of the school lunch fund dated thirty August twenty thirteen in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Seven.
If I could, uh, just for clarification, someone asked me about this. Why are we spending money? It's because we collect the money, and then we have to pass it on to the person or the, uh, uh, food service provider. That's why we have this little bit of information for, on school lunch money.
Yeah.
We collect it, and then we distribute it. Correct?
We get billed by the vendor.
Very good. A person came up and asked me that in the big Y the other day, so.
People watch, and it's a good question.
Okay. Well, yeah. Twenty-two zero one, okay. I move that the school committee approved the warrant batch number twenty-two zero one of the general operating fund for fiscal year twenty fourteen, um, well, that fund dated thirty August twenty thirteen in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
I move that the school committee approved the warrant batch number twenty-two zero two of the special revenues and grants fund dated thirty August twenty thirteen in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And that's it.
That's it for warrants. There is no consent agenda. There are no minutes tonight. There is an executive session, however. So I will need a motion, and this motion requires a roll call vote.
I move that the school committee adjourned to, excuse me, into exec, executive session for the purpose of strategies that relates to litigation, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body to reconvene in
Well, second.
Into open session.
Second.
Motion, okay.
Okay. Motion requires a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you very much for joining us. We'll be back on September ninth at seven PM in this room. Have a great night. Now we're supposed to wait like thirty.